Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 4, 2024 Kent County Public Schools Open Session Meeting. This meeting is centered around the superintendent search. We do also have our MAF consultants here this evening, so we have an agenda filled with with topics that will continue us down the path of looking for our next school superintendent. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. The administration is recommending the approval of the agenda for this evening, and in order to do that, to approve it, I need to have a motion to approve. Seeking a motion.
Can I ask a question? I'm fine with it, but I didn't realize we were going to go into closed session. I thought we were just going to be in open session the whole time talking about the superintendent.
We have a closed session to talk about administrative function.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay.
Discussing salary and benefit.
Gotcha. I motion that we approve the agenda.
Great. Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Do we have any further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is moving into closed session. The administration is recommending approval to move into closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Adam Costas, legal counsel, Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, Mr. Bill Middleton and Dr. Terry Greenwood are MAF consultants, will move to closed session under general provisions Article 3-103A1I. The topic of this administrative function is to discuss salary and benefit parameters for superintendent's search, and the reason for closed session discussion of the topic's substance of discussion is considered administrative function outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act. This public body is recessing an open session to carry out administrative function in a meeting that is not open to the public pursuant to 3-104. With that being said, we're looking for a motion to move into closed session.
Do we anticipate returning from closed session at 6:30 also?
20 minutes to 30 minutes. I was going to announce that once we got there.
That was gonna be my question before.
Once we get the motion, I was.
Okay. At 6? Okay.
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. McGee has the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments or questions? Hearing no, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye? Okay, we have ayes. Any opposition? Hearing no opposition, the motion passes. We will return at approximately 20 to 30 minutes after moving into closed session. Thank you so much.
Open session meeting for Kent County Public Schools. Today is Monday, March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. We, this is the superintendent search meeting set aside solely for discussion surrounding our search process. The first item coming out of closed is to report on closed session. The Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members this board, added Justice Legal Counsel, Gail Manley, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, Mr. Bill Middleton, and Dr. Terry Greenwood are made consultants, and for a very, very, very short time, Mr. Dan Hushen was also in attendance, went into closed session under General Provisions three dash one zero three A one I. The topic was administrative function, discuss salary and benefit parameters for superintendent search. The reason for the closed session discussion, the topic substance of discussion is considered administrative function outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act. The public body is recessing, recessed, an open session to carry out administrative function in a meeting that is not open to the public pursuant to three dash one zero four. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could ask everyone to please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move right into our discussion. The first item is review of the superintendent search survey. Mr. Middleton, I would ask if you could join us at the podium, that'd be fantastic. Appreciate that. And Dr. Green, thank you.
Okay, as you know, the search was out for two weekends, and it's interesting that a number of the items apparently came in in that last weekend. You had a total of one hundred eighty-nine responses. One was submitted in Spanish, and that was translated to the English version. The, if, if, the survey called for five to seven items for each column, and many, many people took advantage of the seven, some more than seven. So I did an average of six responses, which means there were about one thousand one hundred actual responses to look at. And that included a hundred and nine pages of information. What we did, we split them up between the three consultants, and each one took about sixty, and we went through and got the key words. A comment here, the respondents were very verbal. There were many more statements, sentences, and so forth than typically we find on surveys. Typically, you'll have a one word, that's it. One word would be seven or eight of them, whatever. But I think as you saw, there was a lot of them that were very verbal. That is interesting because you, sometimes there were no key words in the statement. So you had to kind of guess or figure out what, what keyword ought to mean. So that, that did come a little bit of an issue, but I think we did a fairly good job of figuring those out. That, that also would affect the number of key words that you come up with because some, it was just a statement, this is what you ought to do. The, the number of statements did not necessarily reflect the number of characteristics that were listed. That's the point I think I'm making. So you had a copy of the surveys and had a chance to look at them. So I'm not telling you anything that, that you don't already know really, but the, the, the numbers, yeah. You have a worksheet that goes through the entire survey. There, there's a number, for instance, with the first item here, the fifty-eight responses covered the items in this main category. The main category there would be educational experience. Experience in the classroom, experience in administration, someone, some more than one wanted an assistant superintendent or a superintendent, and they wanted knowledge of current best practices, Maryland school law, Maryland financial system, and Maryland blueprint. That fifty-eight was the most responses in the, in the whole survey as far as a category. So that's something we need to think about as we move to the application. Fifty responses, an outstanding experienced leader and so forth, goal oriented. You can see the items that are there. The main one, I think, that really kind of went through it is ability and commitment to respect and work well with staff, and accepts personal accountability and holds others accountable. Those items were found in a number of places in the survey. There were forty-five items, experience in and understanding of rural areas, small school system, small town culture, and understands a diverse school system, culture, race, equity, and disabilities. Forty-five responses, pick, pick that up. Then forty-three, personal values, which was interesting. The forty-three, I suspect that some of the statements that I, that didn't have keywords in them related to these personal values. The one that hit, hit me and others was relationship builder, integrity, and let's see, team player. Okay. The, then thirty-six, excellent communication. A good listener was listed a number of times in the survey. A good listener, somebody that not just sat and watched you talk, but listened to you. Then thirty-three responses, caring, kind, and patient. That's the personal type of person that you're looking at. Diplomatic and fair, collaborative, again, relationship builder, thick-skinned. It was interesting.
That showed up more than once.
Respect for others, and a number of times, and pretty strongly, an advocate as part of that. An advocate for the employees, an advocate for the teachers, an advocate for the students, an advocate for the school system total overall. That's why it was in capital letters. Thirty, thirty-one responses said the person needed to be a hundred percent vested in Kent County and Kent County schools. I think there was one statement in there that they needed to live Kent County, period. Not necessarily live in Kent County, but live Kent County. Involved in the community, visible, that was listed a number of times. Visible in schools, visible in the community. And that, that was a, a overall overarching kind of thing that, that you, as you read through those, that showed up. And then nineteen, passionate, passionate and a strong advocate for kids, students first, and understands today's youth. If they find, you find somebody that really understands today's youth, tell them to write a book, okay? But anyhow, I think it's a good thought, passionate, a strong advocate for kids. The, the responses, which I think you have, twenty-seven percent of the responses came from parents or guardians. Students, twenty percent, and there were some, I thought, excellent student responses. Okay, they, they were well thought, thought out. Employee, nineteen percent, business commu-, or community member, fourteen, and others categories, which they didn't specify, eighteen percent. That's a little high to what we normally get in the other category, but I suspect because the wording of the other one, it's, it's community members, is what made up most of that. It's not, the response, responses are It's not, the response, responses are not out of line with what we typically see a lot, except in some cases, the employee line gets longer than it did here. And I won't go into what that might mean, but if, you can take it whichever you want as a positive or a negative, but typically, if it's a negative, there are going to be more responses, so.
My, my favorite one was the student, this cracks me up. This is what he's looking for in the superintendent, cool and not mean. That's what they want, somebody cool and not mean.
Yeah, I did not list that.
I will say, even with, with the low number of, of submissions that we got, it's clear that everyone really took time and, and thought about their responses. And, and I really liked any time a student mentioned that one of the most positive things about Kent County was a certain teacher. So it was always nice to read different teachers' names in that category, so that was good.
And, and we did not do this detail on question one or question three, okay? That, question one is basically used for recruiting and information that we use, and question three is yours. That's for you. Okay, move up to the next. Okay, questions?
Any comments, questions?
I'd like, there's a few things I'd like to read, what I took away from that. Do we have time for that?
Sure.
Okay, first of all, I'm just going to go over the three parts, the positive things about Kent County. And I looked through this whole list, I didn't get everything, but I got to the main things I liked. There's lots of agriculture, small community, friendly people, the teachers, KCPS does a good job of being diverse, and the Chesapeake Bay, those are some of the positive things about Kent County. In the five to seven characteristics, not being afraid of change, I like that one. Make tough decisions, candidates should live within the school district, I know we had that discussion the last time. Experience collaborating with volunteers and volunteer organizations, meaning try to get involved in as many things as they can. A willingness to engage with the whole community, this one's in, but ready to absorb heat, insults, unfair acquisitions in order to create a better system for every student. Strategic thinker. Be present at events, meet the people, meaning like if we have sports events or we have any kind of, walk around and talk to people. I remember there was a gentleman at Washington College, President Joseph McLean, he used to go around to the classrooms, he'd go everywhere to meet with the students and to meet with, and know their names and learn who the people were. The ability to be honest about challenges that the district is facing, down-to-earth, I think you mentioned that, that one. Perseverance, and these are all the things that I want in someone. Always be positive, be willing to listen, you mentioned that one, that's extremely important. Understand small-town culture, meet with community leaders. And the last one is the five challenges in Kent County. The lack of community to buy into KCPS, I, I don't want that. We have a great school system. I've been, I meet students periodically, I met one a couple days ago and asked, where do you go to school? How do you know she was a student? She goes, Kent County High School. I said, what do you think? She goes, I love it. She goes, I was homeschooled, and I'm in 11th grade, and I'm here. It'd be great if we could get more people to come, we need to get that positive thinking now. Getting all the stakeholders to participate with local school system, meaning the business leaders around here, which I think we, we're working on that now. Changing the narrative that our school system's not perfect. Well, no school system is perfect, but we need more people to really engage in our school system. I, in, in my opinion, I think we're doing extremely well. Keeping qualified teachers, that's a tough one. Funding to support programs that would benefit our youth enrollment in our schools and poverty. We've got a lot of issues with poverty. And again, follow up with the locals. If the superintendent meets with local people, business leaders, follow up with them, get back to them, just don't say, hey, I'll listen to you, and then you never hear from them. I want engagement. I want someone who's excited to be here and will engage with the community. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Okay, the reason for the survey is to come up with the characteristics which go on the application. So I assume that's the next discussion. You have, I believe, a draft of what I put together. It's, it is that, it's a draft. I looked at the information that I just gave you with all that, and it's important to remember that the first characteristic that's listed here is the one that you will get a essay about, of 400 words or less, okay? So if you want them to write about something else, then we simply need to move them around. This is open for discussion. There are five here, typically five to seven, again, so if you want to, there's room to add one that, that, you know, I missed. And we, we can go over each one of them. There are a lot of key words, and many of the key words are in bold, okay? I tried to pick as many key words out of the survey as I could when I was writing these characteristics.
Mr. Middleton, do you have that, do you have a separate document for that?
Is that, is that the draft of the criteria that you're talking about? Or is that the previous job description?
You should have had this. You don't have that?
We have, we have this.
For C, which is the updated application of superintendent of school.
Okay, so that was, we don't have a printed out of that, but there is an attachment on the agenda.
Review of criteria?
No, updated application.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do show up on the updated application. Yes, they do.
What was that, Bill, for C?
Yeah, the only thing I have coming up when I pull up 4C is the draft criteria and general, general info, but it's not bringing me to that second, if it's a second page, I'm not seeing it.
I've got, yeah, just one page on that one?
Yeah, the, the attachment's reading page one of one.
I'm looking under 4C right now, is that what you said?
But it's, it's the criteria, it's not, it's not the document that he just held up.
Yeah, that's, that's 4C, it's the item under 4C.
Yeah.
It's 4C?
But I'm saying, when you, when you open it up, I'm not able to pull it up. I, I, when I hit 4C.
You saw that this one right here?
Yeah, that's not it, though.
This one?
No, there's a, there's another attachment that he held up, that's, that I see it in my queue in the bottom right for the download, but I don't see it.
That's what you're looking for, but.
Yeah.
That shouldn't have to be on screen.
No, this, this is different.
I have that, but that's not.
We all have what's on the screen, this is the characteristics that we don't have.
Can we get copies of this?
Yeah, they're making copies.
So I used, just for fun, when I received their survey and was reading through everything, I filtered it through AI to come up with categories for me, so I have some pages that I'll, I'll share with you, and I can share with the rest of the board also, that I thought were interesting, to, to pull things out, and it broke things out into different categories also.
And she's making copies of this.
Yeah, if we could just hold for her to bring that back, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that everyone has it in front while we're talking.
And one of the, one of the things that came up for, for me when I went through that process was student-centric focus was something that, that came up.
Somewhere.
Yeah, student-first, so you have it in, in the last item.
Yeah, we had that number plate, I think it'll be there.
I think it's supposed to be in here somewhere. Student achievement is top priority.
Passionate amounts.
Passion about the education of all children.
And then innovation was also something that, that popped up for me. Innovation, so somebody who was willing to innovate.
That word was there a number of times.
Did you hear about Star Wars?
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't get that, I didn't understand that.
They didn't want Star Wars.
Yeah, and innovative and visionary leader.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we do have the characteristics in front of us now, so definitely we can take a look at that.
The characteristics were taken from the information that I just went over with you, although to be quite candid, there are some things here that probably didn't make that line because it fit Kent County in my mind. I, I looked at the characteristics that you used to hire your current superintendent 11 years ago, and it's amazing how many of the key words then are the same as they are today. It's also interesting that a number of them that were hot topics then, now they're no longer hot topics. So this is a, you know, this, this is just my thoughts of what would fit Kent County. People tend to read these. The interesting thing is that most people believe and understand after applying that a lot of the interview questions are going to come from these, okay? So they use these to kind of prepare themselves. And that's, that's the way it is, basically. We look to see that we have said this is what we're looking for, so that's what we interviewed for. I can go over these one by one if that's what you prefer.
That'd be great if you could, thank you.
An experienced leader, that's the lead topic there, with broad K-12 experience, which means, actually means classroom, administration, and central office for most people. Who believes that student achievement is the top priority, that was throughout the survey. Is, and understands the challenges and opportunities of a small rural school district with a significant percentage of multicultural and disadvantaged students. And I didn't have your actual percentages, but from the discussions that I've heard, I think you have a significant percentage of multicultural and disadvantaged students.
75% of our students, I think, are, meet the poverty criteria.
So, so I should, they had put the word poverty in there?
Well, I'm just saying.
Disadvantaged will take care of it, I guess.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I know that, that came up recently, it's, you know, anyhow. Poverty is the criteria that has made them disadvantaged, you know?
And, and I, we may want to, because all of our schools are, have something about experience in Title I, with Title I schools.
Okay.
Disadvantaged, which is more Title I.
Disadvantaged with maybe a parenthesis, Title I?
Well, actually, I think we want to talk about Title I and community schools, because there's a big question in Maryland for community schools, and it's part of the blueprint also. And we have, we have two community schools now and a third coming up, I think, with the middle school potentially becoming a community school in the next year, so over, over half of our schools will be community schools. So we might want to have an experience with Title I and community schools.
Disadvantaged, multicultural, Title I, and community. Comma, community schools. And put that before and disadvantaged students?
Yeah, and we, sorry to keep, we may also want to mention a, a growing EL population, a growing English, English language population. Because that's our fastest-growing student population right now.
That should be covered in the multicultural.
Multicultural.
Okay, yes, sorry.
It's already in there.
Okay. Item two, educator with successful experience, and that was a number of people in the classroom and administration who has knowledge of current best practices and instruction, Maryland financial accounting, budgeting, school law, and Maryland blueprint.
The Maryland blueprint is by far the most important thing. I mean, they're all important, but they have to know the blueprint, they have to know everything about it.
I think you're right today.
One of the things that struck me, I'm looking at the notes I made, reading, talking about successful experience in the classroom, and this speaks of that, but it was a little more specific, it said, history of improving measurable performance in schools. I, I would like to have somebody that documented, that has turned a school system around or has improved it. I mean, successful experience in classroom, I don't know how you measure that. And maybe I'm being too hair-splitting, just saying that.
Repeat what you said in the very beginning.
A history of improving measurable performance in schools.
Okay.
Are you saying that successful experience in the classroom?
It's harder to quantify without something, you know, as a measure.
That's important, though.
It's a great interview question.
Yeah.
Educator with successful measurable performance?
Right, yeah.
In classroom, and so forth and so on.
Or in the schools, yeah. I mean, and then, I, I mean, I think it's, first of all, I think it's very important, and it showed up in a lot of these, I'm looking at the top of my list, classroom experience, you don't want to have someone who has just been a pencil pusher their whole life, they've got to have had their feet on the, their boots on the ground, so to speak, at some point. So, and I just feel like successful experience in classroom, like Mrs. Sullivan said, I don't know how you quantify that.
I think that's a requirement.
Well, it's like saying, yeah, she was a really nice teacher, I liked her and I learned a lot, but what does that mean, you know? So.
So I had the word measurable in there to make it so you could look at it.
Yeah, I'd like some data.
Interesting thing is, you can't get certified if you haven't had a classroom teacher.
Oh, it's good to know, okay.
It's good to express, you know, anyhow.
Gotcha.
Okay, and I, I think I might leave Maryland blueprint in bold.
Yes.
Yes.
Typically, I, I'd take the bold off of the words that, you know, are key words, but I think I'll leave blueprint in bold.
Yeah.
Next, innovative, I got that word. Visionary, I heard that word. Passionate, I heard that word. About the education of all children in Kent County, holds high standards of ethics, integrity, and honesty, and expects those traits in others.
Pretty clear, pretty clean, clean and clear to me.
Pardon?
It's pretty clean and clear.
Well, it's pretty direct.
Yeah.
A consensus builder, that was in a number of statements. Who will communicate openly and honestly with staff, students, and parents, Board of Education, and elected officials, listens to stakeholders, strengthens partnerships with business, government, community, and higher education, which I think was a comment that you made, is able to build support for the public schools, will be visible and active in Kent County schools and community. And that goes to show up, don't, don't live at your desk.
Yeah.
I can, I can tell you that I fully believe that the most successful students, especially in a small school system, most, most successful superintendents spend a lot of time in schools, and in community meetings and so forth. You know, you, you can quell a lot of rumors by just showing up and talking to people. Any comments on that one? Okay. A decisive administrator, and that word, it was kind of different, but it showed up a lot of times. Decisive, decision-maker, makes, makes the hard decisions with strength of conviction, who respects, motivates, and empowers staff, recognizing success, promotes accountability throughout the system. That accountability statement, in a couple places, had a negative tone to it. And I thought, yeah, we need to get that in there. But not just themselves that are accountable, but promotes accountability throughout the system.
I, I think this is one of the most important ones of the whole list right here. Let's think about this, a decisive administrator with the strength and conviction who respects, motivates, and empowers staff, recognizes. empowers staff, recognizes success, and promotes accountability throughout the system. Would you be able to add something like that engages with the community? I mean, I think this is just great what it says right here.
Well, that's meant the community's mentioned in the one above.
In the administrative role. I'd like to work in something about encourages collaboration or collaborative.
What word, collaborate?
Trying to think, because I-
There's a, I had, I had collaborative approach. That showed up in a couple of the things, or being a team builder.
I think in, in our small school system, we have the opportunity to really tap our, our teachers and staff members who are, you know, in the classrooms, who have lots of great ideas.
Should that go up under the consensus builder?
You know, I really want to specifically have it be geared toward making sure we're collaborating with our staff and giving our, our staff the opportunity to, to have an impact on decisions.
It says empowers staff and recognizes success. But I think that last one is the best one of all.
promotes accountability and collaboration throughout the system?
Yeah, I think that would be good.
That word?
Yeah.
I was wondering if back up on the, the number three thing about an innovative and visionary leader who holds high standards of ethics, integrity, and honesty. I don't know if it's overkill, or maybe it's understood, but transparency in decision-making. I think transparency is very important. And I don't know where to put that. I was thinking in the, in the third thing, but maybe not.
I'm glad you said that, because transparency in our school system is what we need more and more. The community needs to know what we're doing. So, I like that, Mrs. McGee, about the transparency. That should go in there somewhere.
Yeah. I'm surprised I didn't get the word transparency in here, something to say the truth. Okay.
I'm thinking the, the third thing, but I don't know if that's where it would be most appropriate, but I think it's important somewhere.
Yeah, I think it would go in the, in the third bullet.
Well, I guess it could say holds high standards of ethics, integrity, transparency, and honesty.
Yeah, I was thinking that's where we would put it, yeah.
I think in, in the number two item where we talk about financial accounting slash budgeting, I think that we, we also want to make sure that we have somebody who can long-range plan because we, we are shoestring budgets. And so, finding ways to make sure that there is going to be something for the following year, as opposed to somebody who, who zeros out every year.
Yeah, so if I could, just one second, just pause on the strategic and go back to the transparency, if I could, I'm sorry. So, the fourth arrow, consensus builder who will communicate openly and honestly. Openly is transparency.
Okay.
Right? So, openly is transparent.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I'm fine, just like I said, I wanted-
Yeah, no, so I just wanted to, as I was reading that, I'm trying to find the space for it, and I felt like the third bullet point, and I know transparency is also a characteristic-
I think it's because transparency was the buzzword that a couple of people wrote. That's why it stuck with me.
But I look at the third bullet point, and to me, that's talking about the person and their passion on education and the standards and what they expect. Transparency was, was a little different, so that's why it felt kind of wonky to me putting it there.
Okay.
But I think when you look at four, communicate openly and honestly with staff, that to me is the definition of transparent, unless I'm completely off-base.
Oh, I see what you're running.
Okay. And I'm not trying to shortchange the word transparent.
No, it's okay, hey, as long as we got it, as long as we're all on the same page-
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was there. Now, on the strategic piece, you know, that is all about strategy, right? I mean, it's all about vision, it's all about strategy, and how do you align within the guardrails of what's coming at you? And in some respects, not knowing exactly what's coming at you, right? So, so how do you?
I mean, as short and concise as that number two budget is, it's, it is, our biggest issue is how we manage that budget every year. So, I think pumping that one up a little bit.
Administration knowledge of current best practice instruction, Maryland financial accounting, budgeting, school law, Maryland blueprint.
An innovative and visionary leader with experience in long-range planning.
I mean, that's a broad stroke. I mean, that, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you were planning on dialing down into the financial aspect of it, or if you were-
I think, I think just even if we could add something more about, you know, fiscal responsibility, or, or, what is, what is another word that I'm thinking of? Efficiency with a small budget was something that somebody said. I think that we, we have to be mindful that we have a very tight budget to work with.
Knowledge of current best practices, financial accounting.
Which one are we on, three?
What about something that somebody said, proficiency in managing school district finances, or something to that effect, or in managing school district budgets?
Well, that, that's implying just an understanding or someone who knows how to do it, right? If you're, if you're dialing in on strategy.
It says financial accounting right here, is that what you're?
If, if that feels like enough to everybody else, I just, I just-
I'm not saying it feels, that it's enough or not enough. I just, you know, I hear you loud and clear about someone who has the skill set to be able to manage through the uncertainty, as well as the small, the constraints of a small school system. I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't call it out. I just, I just don't know how to-
How to word it.
In there.
Plus, we're all going to be going over the budget anyhow, all five of us, so, you know.
Yeah, but we need, but we, we rely on somebody else.
I understand, but we're the final vote on that, and I understand what you're saying about.
Budgeting here and put proficiency in managing school district budget.
I mean, it would almost be a statement, understanding the challenges of a small school system constrained by financial, that sounds, that doesn't sound right.
Just add a who statement, who has a understanding of the-
The constraints of a rural-
Constraints of a-
School budget.
I mean, that's covered in the first one, though.
Well, I was going to say, with that, that's a challenge and opportunity.
Understands the challenges and opportunities of a small rural school district with a significant percentage.
I think, I think we need to, to hit the budget.
Hit the financial side of it.
Yeah.
Understanding the challenges and opportunities of a small rural school district with a significant, with challenges that include a significant percent of multicultural disadvantaged students and-
And limited, limited budgeting resources, limited-
Well, you know what else falls in there, and it showed up, but I wasn't going to say it's a characteristic, is on top of everything else, we've got aging buildings.
Yeah.
You know? The facility showed up in a couple of those.
Infrastructure.
So, what are you, Mrs. Sullivan, what are you envisioning? Somebody that could come in and say, here's my, well, because it's a four-year contract, my four-year plan for financially for the school system?
Not necessarily, but-
No, I'm not being snarky, I'm just saying, the reason we're so reactive is because we rely on 400 High Street to tell us how much money they're giving us or not giving us.
Right.
And that's all tied into enrollment, and we don't know that, we, there's no way to project what things are going to be like four years from now.
Right. But I think it is, if, if part of the applicant's background of student achievement is that they were able to buy a bunch of things and hire a bunch of extra teachers and do all of these things, we are not going to be able to do that, and that approach is not necessarily going to work for our own small district.
Interestingly enough, someone had written this down, which was probably talking a little bit towards the financial part, that said they wanted somebody who wasn't entrenched in education, whose whole career hadn't been in education. They needed, they wanted somebody with a business or workforce background as well.
Yeah.
We just need Superman.
We do. But I, but I mean, I, I think the, the budget pieces is huge. I mean, it's huge for every school district, and I get that, but I think that we, we all know.
How about in the first one, rural school district with, how long, I need a word, but budget restraints?
Budget restraints is good. I think it's accurate.
And a, and a significant percentage of multicultural and so forth, so put the statement in there.
Yeah. A small rural, rural school district with budget restraints and a significant, yeah.
Pushing, but it gets the words in.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I, I, I'm not against having it in there, but I will tell you, there's probably folks out there that will think that we have enough funding and that we're not budget restrained. So, I'm not, I'm just putting it out there that, you know, that's defined by, you know, who's looking at it.
So, is, is resource, limited resources too vague of a word? You want specifically finance, financial?
I, I kind of do, because it feels-
Okay, no, we're just making conversation.
I mean, it feels like we, our, our biggest job as a board is that budget. I mean-
What did you, Trish, what did you just say?
I was just saying limited resources, but that could be too generic of a word and may not hit right to the, the core of what Francois's talking about is finance, the money.
Yeah.
I think it's making us look cheap if you put those kind of words in there, in my opinion. I like what Mr. Getz has to say, we need to just leave it as it is. And we know there's budget issues, but we don't want to make it look like, as you pointed out, some people think we have the money when we might not have the money sometimes. We've come up with the money. I think the whole thing looks pretty good, but I see what Mrs. Sullivan wants to add, something about no buzzer, we don't have the funds, I mean.
It's not, I'm not saying that we don't have. I want somebody who has experience with a constrained budget, so that they aren't used to just having-
Somebody who's navigated those challenges.
Yes.
So, what if we, what if we added to the end of the bullet, the number two, number two bullet point, Maryland financial county budgeting, school law, Maryland blueprint, that face, or that, that a small system, or a small, a small system, challenges that a small system faces, something along the lines where we just tag it on to the end of number two, that encompasses, it pulls all of the classroom administration, best practices and instruction, Maryland financial accounting, budgeting, school law, and the Maryland blueprint that a small system could face. A small system, because that, that is really, kind of brings it all together. I mean, all of those are, you know, not unique to us, but they're all small system, we're dealing with small system stuff.
Maybe the budgeting in there can be put in dark. I mean, it's right in that number two, it has the budgeting right there, but I see what you're saying, Mrs. Sullivan, you want someone with experience, but basically says, an educator with successful experience, and then it has budgeting in that same paragraph. I mean, it's all right there.
Well, maybe, did you say put it in dark, right?
Yeah, just make it darker.
Okay.
Budgeting just darker. I mean, then, you know, it's a little more important than it is.
I do agree that we need to, however you want to word it, put it in there so that they understand, because since I've been here, I do know that we have a restricted budget. And it would be something to get a superintendent that really doesn't know how to work with that, or just takes for granted that it's mentioned, but it's not something I really have to worry about, because we've mentioned a lot of things, and it's likely that you have to know about it or whatever, but not as heavy as we need it.
Can, can we put, and Maryland blueprint, challenges that a small school, school system faces?
And make the budgeting darker.
Well, we can.
But everybody, I mean, honestly, Montgomery County, I mean, every county's got their challenges with the blueprint, we know that.
But there's a large system, ours is small.
I know, but they're, but everybody's going to have a challenge.
And number one, it says understands the challenges and opportunities of a small rural district.
Even if we didn't have the blueprint, which would be, it's hard to believe, we wouldn't have the blueprint, we still would be having the, I mean, our budget problems predate blueprint.
Well, and, you know, if we, if we, like we kind of discussed, we're potentially anticipating that this would be somebody coming in from a, an assistant or a deputy superintendent position to come here.
Yeah.
They, they may not have had to deal with a budget cycle at the same level, and, you know, I-
We could certainly vet that out with the interview process.
Yeah.
Right? We could vet that out through the interview process.
Oh, yeah.
With a question specifically geared toward operations and budgeting to a small school system.
I think you're covered to add that to your interview, if you wish, yes. There's enough in here about budget and problems and resources and what have you, that it's very legitimate to have a question in your interview about that.
Yeah.
Experience with that, okay. I will accept that.
In my opinion.
Okay. All right, any others? Any, any topics that I haven't covered here that you think we need to cover, and I, I tried to do the waterfront, and I'll tell you, if you get below, or you get more than five or six, some of them will get red, and some won't, and it just, it just gets overloaded. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just looking at the characteristics with the changes we've discussed, I mean, I think this is, this would work just fine.
With the changes that we have, can you adopt these?
Are we, are we voting?
You don't have to, but-
Directionally, directionally, we agree that-
Directionally, you agree, yeah, you don't, they have to vote.
Yeah, it's under administrative function. So, directionally, are we all in agreement that this is the direction that we want to go to?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have directions, and he has directions.
With the suggestions.
Pardon?
With the suggestions.
Yes, with the suggested changes.
Do we want to vote?
And I'll have those, it's not announced, not allowed to-
Okay.
To Dan tomorrow. Because these go in the application, and they also go in the flyer that he's working on. So, he's, he's waiting for the final.
Yep. Very good. Okay. So, any additional questions on the survey or the characteristics before we move on to the job description review? Okay. Mr. Constance, if I could ask you to come up, I know you've got an attachment that has some pretty lines. Thank you.
Yes, sure.
Okay. I see that. May I use the mouse? Okay, thank you. So, last meeting, we discussed some potential changes, edits to the job description, which hadn't been updated in, in a number of years. And so, taking your comments, I incorporated those edits and track changes, which you'll see in blue, and I'll just walk through those. I, I just updated the, the site, just Comar, I just put Comar up there. Number two, we added an exception there, you know, given that the superintendent doesn't necessarily attend all meetings, there's, there is a carve-out for the board evaluation of the superintendent's performance. There was a comment about number three, broadening it a little bit to include staying current on Maryland law, guidance from the Maryland State Board of Education, state superintendent, U.S. Department of Education, since this guidance comes in from a variety of sources, so there was a desire to broaden that statement. a variety of sources, so there was a desire to broaden that statement. Same desire with number five, just to broaden that statement a bit to, to include regulations and policies. Number seven is just a spacing issue that I just, it, it looks like an addition, but it was just a spacing. Number nine, we also broadened that a bit. The original draft was a, talked about changes, but I, we broadened it to include all actions, personnel actions, which could encompass a wide variety of, of personnel moves beyond those which were specifically listed in the prior draft, and then we just added through the superintendent's authority, since the superintendent has various authority as it relates, different levels of authority when it comes to making decisions or recommendations as it affects different classifications of employees within the system. So we made that change throughout where applicable, adding superintendent's authority under Maryland law. Some more changes here, some minor changes. There was a, we had a discussion about number 11, and what, what was the intent behind that, and so I added within and between departments, that seemed to be the direction that you all wanted to go with.
You know, because we didn't know what line, in line.
Right, that was the, yeah, that was the ambiguous term before, which I, I think we have cleared up with our, with our discussion last week and these edits. So moving down to the next page. I think that 115 was just a spacing issue. Twenty is our attempt at consolidating some much lengthier language that existed in the prior version, to make it much shorter, and also just more broad and all encompassing under the superintendent's authority. So make personnel decisions and/or recommendations to the board pursuant to the authority granted to the superintendent under Maryland law. The prior statement was more specific, but not complete, and, and it was much longer. And so it also encompassed an additional bullet as well. So we were able to consolidate two bullets that were lengthy into one much shorter general, generally applicable bullet in twenty. Twenty-four, there was, like I said before, a desire to broaden many of these to include, and so this one was to include state and local government, which is, is a, as we know, a very significant function of the superintendent. Twenty-six, I think it was Ms. Sullivan wanted to add, using all available modes of, of communication to effectively reach the public, and, and of course, many of you spoke about that as Twenty-seven was added, safety and security. And then twenty-nine is this catch-all that I recommended, that, that I discussed as well, just, you know, anything that's not expressly listed herein, superintendent is, we expect to exercise their authority, have the powers and duties afforded under Maryland law. So we can't possibly capture everything in this, but this is our catch-all at the end. And then, and then we noticed the board has a separate policy on evaluation of superintendents, so we reference that here at the bottom. And this will be revised, or I guess renewed, three, four, twenty-four today. So, any questions, comments, additional changes?
I like the safety addition.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll just read it. Overscore the school system's safety and security protocols and measures undertaken by the school system to maintain the safety of students and staff. So thank you for adding that.
Yes, absolutely.
I like how that's worded.
Good, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay. So this is just in a track changes version, and, and Mr. DeVilio or Mr. Bork can just accept it and put it in final, ready to go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the review of the criteria.
Which we just did, which we did before, the qualifications.
We did, yes, the qualifications. The criteria is actually the.
Things like whether they have to have a P D.
The other document. Do we need to go back into that? Mr. Middleton, the criteria document that we, that we reviewed last week, you know, is there anything there that this board would like to review again, or, I mean, it has the twelve bullet points. I think we're, I think we're not recommending any changes there.
Yeah.
They, they were discussed, and they want to change the, 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 or whatever.
We did talk about the, if we wanted to be specific about what degrees we wanted to include, if we were going to go with doctorate preferred. And then we also talked about residency.
Yeah, so, so we, let's talk about the, the educational side of the residency we're actually going to talk about in the letter E after review of the application. So let's.
Okay.
So from, are we, are we keeping the verbiage doctorate preferred in the criteria? When you mention preferred, I mean, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're locked in.
Yeah, it's, it's not required by the state certification requirements. It's an upgrade to that, or if you want to look that way, but it's, it's optional this way. If, I believe, if you have a candidate that has a master's plus, and that's who you want, that's fine.
Do you want to say doctorate in education?
Yeah.
Educational fields preferred?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I think it needs to be something.
Education studies.
Or leadership or something, yeah. Educational leadership, I think, is one of the things. I can think of, and of course, I'm older than all of you guys, two superintendents here who did not have doctorates. One of them is looked upon as one of the best superintendents we ever had, Mr. Lupus. He was a mister, he wasn't a doctor, you know? And then two superintendents before Dr. Couch, Mr. Pack, wasn't a doctor, so.
Mr. Asher, did you have something?
Just one thing, you know, in writing job descriptions, you know, another thing that you can add to it, you know, not to get so specific, but not to, you know, open up to everything, you can say doctorate in ed- education or related field.
Oh, okay.
Which would open the doors to someone with a doctorate special ed or school psychology, but it's still an educational.
I like that.
I like that, too.
I like that, too.
Yeah, and educational leadership would certainly fall under that.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, the other outstanding piece was the fourth bullet point, willing to relocate to Kent County if not a current resident. We had some spirited conversation at the last meeting a week ago. Certainly, we can discuss that in policy CBB, which is in section four E as an ear, in a little bit, if that's okay with the group.
Sure, we'll discuss it when we discuss the policy. I, I kind of want to do it separate, if that's okay?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we have the review of the application next. So we'll review the application. It's been adjusted and updated. We'll review that, and then come back to the policy that talks about the residency of the superintendent.
Okay.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I just feel like we need to address it.
I agree 100%.
To make it clear, yeah.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we get the application out of the way?
Okay.
And then we'll come back to the residency piece.
Sounds good.
Okay. Fine.
Mr. Middleton, do you have, do you have that? Can you bring that?
Yeah, it's.
Thank you.
It's there somewhere. I, I need to compliment Dan. I asked him to clean it up and put some color in it and so forth.
He did, didn't he?
Not only that, he also updated all the wishes and thoughts that we had expressed, so. He did, did a very good, quick job. Turnaround was, there it is. Okay, the, the first page is not a real issue. I don't think there was nothing there that we really had to change except the salary. And on advice of the attorney, that was removed. Current salary was removed.
Okay.
Other employment experience, Maryland superintendent certification, there were no changes. References, Terry and I talked on the way up here that we really don't like the wording, but we have no idea how to change it, and it's worked before, so we, it, it says you need three references listed here, and then two other, from other references to current letters that they send in. I, it's worked, but it seems awkward, but.
So I have a copy of the application for superintendent from Queen Anne County Public Schools, and I can read, their, their wording is different for that reference in section. It says, please give the names, addresses, and phone numbers of at least three individuals who are familiar with your professional experience. Additionally, please include current reference letters from two other individuals written within the last 12 months. Each of these references may be contacted before the initial interviews. As your candidacy moves forward, individuals other than those listed below may be contacted. So it's slightly, slightly different.
I'm smiling because that's one we used before we wrote this.
Oh, before you wrote that one. Oh, that's funny.
Yes.
There you go.
I mean, we can, I think that, Terry, I think that is better than what we've got here.
So you go back, back to the beginning?
I'm willing to just substitute that, if that's all right with you. It, it, it's cleaner, okay? Says it's basically the same thing, but it's cleaner. So if you will see that.
Yes.
Dan and I get copies of that.
Yes.
Are we okay directionally as a group that that's, that's how we want to go?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Background information, the biggest change was the embarrassment statement.
I, I still think that's important.
Well, actually.
Or is that illegal?
It is, but legally, you need to tie that to job specifications.
Okay.
Okay? So hopefully, it says, could prevent you from effectively performing the role of Kent County Superintendent of Schools should it become public.
Okay.
The, the law, it gives us the authority to discipline and so forth if it's related to a job performance, and that's what we try to do here.
So I'm going to go back to the Queen Anne's one, and it has, is there anything in your personal life, professional background, or social media presence that could be a concern or embarrassment to you or the board should it become public? If yes, please attach a statement that explains the situation, which you have here. So they, they, I would just point out the inclusion of social media presence as one of the items there, but.
We used to include that, and in a search, we were advised to stay away from social media.
Okay.
They said, you'll get it anyhow through references, but stay away from it in this statement, so.
No problem, just wanted to draw attention to the difference.
Call in which legal eagle you're working with, but the one, one one that we had said, nah, you don't want to mess with that.
Yeah.
All right, good.
And we did discuss all of this at the last meeting, too, about their past, so.
Yeah, I'm just going through the changes that were made as a result of that. Narrative, the one that you had first on that list of characteristics is the one they will write about, and it's 400 words or less. And every once in a while, you'll get one that gives you 750 words, but anyhow. Hire right background, this is a change from the last time. Hire right has changed their procedure. Instead of us putting out the form, and they fill it out, mail it in, or email it in, you go directly to hire right and fill it out. So this was a link to an authorization form from Hire Right Investigative Services, which must be completed and submitted within 48 hours of receipt, will be mailed, will email to the selected finalist, okay? When, when you're named a finalist, you don't have a lot of time to do a background check. Typically, Hire Right responds within a week with a background check. Now, if it's someone that is out of state and has been in three or four states, it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
But anyhow, the authorization will be used to conduct a comprehensive background check on the finalist for the position. So that's a change dictated by Hire Right itself. And it's cleaner, quite frankly, because we ended up with authorization forms that were never used. Financial disclosure, candidate will be required to file a financial disclosure statement later than 30 days after appointment. Any discussion? No? And you already have a financial disclosure form on that, so, yeah.
We do.
No. Please submit a resume, it includes information, there were no change there. The only cha-
Sorry, there's a, a difference on the, the, this application that I have, that it asks for information on all your previous full-time and other work experience. I don't know if that's something that, that you had on before, or if we're interested in other work experience?
Well, a comment that's come out in others is, do you really want to know they worked at McDonald's part-time?
No, not necessarily, I'm just.
I'm just being the devil's advocate a little bit, but, I mean, we can put that other, you know.
I, it was just a difference that was on this application, and it struck me.
What, are you still looking at the Queen Anne's application?
Yeah, and it says, other work experience should include part-time work, consulting, boards and commissions, self-employment, or other work for hire in the last five years.
Yeah, the, the limit of the last five years makes it doable. I have no problem with adding that. It's, it's information that you might want to see, because if you have someone that does a lot of consulting work, you need to know that.
Yeah.
Quite frankly, because that can interfere with what they're supposed to be doing.
Can I send, can I send you that to you and Dan, and maybe?
If the board agrees, I, we, we can just add that to it.
Is that something that the board would like to see?
I'm okay with it.
Terry, you got that, add that? Okay, certifications, and I have included, we took out Hire Right Authorization Form because they don't send it in with the application anymore, so that's gone. And then the exhibit, exhibit one, characteristics, first paragraph to be used for narrative response. The, that whole section will be updated based on our previous discussion tonight. Criteria and general information will be updated based on our previous discussions, previous approvals. Application deadline is April the 8th, and I will, you, you will, are scheduled to receive the applications on the 11th. Okay, and I'll talk with Joe about how that happens. Interviews conducted April and May, positions start date July 1st and so forth. Contact, and my email at MAB is there, and that's where they send the application. And it says that right up front, it goes to MAB. And then you have your equal opportunity statement.
Never mind, sorry.
So, Mr. Middleton, just a question there. So the, the applications are due back the 11th. We have a standalone superintendent search meeting April 15th, so just confirming that that's.
It gives you the weekend.
To take a look at.
To read the applications.
Yeah.
And you will have a, a evaluation sheet, which, that you can use as a scoring sheet for each application. for each application. You may use that, or you may develop your own scoring system. But please have some kind of scoring system before you show up on the 15th. Please don't wait until the 15th to score the, to decide who you want to support for interviews, okay?
Okay.
If two, if a couple of you do that, it'll be a long meeting.
Yeah.
Mr. President, we do need to know whether we want the state to locate Kent County, because that kind of...
Yeah, we're actually going to be moving into that policy right now. So we, we, we do have a policy that, that calls that out, so we were going to hold that, not knowing how long that conversation would be. And that should give us some direction on, you know, next steps if we go from there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Middleton, appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is Policy CBB, recruitment and appointment of the superintendent. Mr. Hushin, I see your...
Thank you, President Gads, school board members. As it's been brought up quite a few times this evening, it was also brought up last week, so the administration is just bringing forth Policy CBB, which is where the superintendent residency requirement lies. And we are bringing it up for you to have an open discussion about that this evening.
Yeah, and I would just...
For information only.
Yeah, and I would just bring out that if you brought Policy CBB up, the, the last paragraph, three paragraphs, as one criteria for appointment, the board requires that the successful candidate for the superintendency agree to live in Kent County during his or her term of office. Other conditions of employment will be detailed in the employment contract executed between the two parties. What I'll say before we open it up for discussion is, is that on the criteria document that was listed before, the terminology states willing to live. And in this one here, it's fairly specific, not fairly, it's very specific, as to the successful candidate for the superintendency agreed to live in Kent County during his or her term of office. So, so I know, I know that... So I know that this was a point of discussion last time, so I'll, I'll open up the floor to discuss.
So since our last meeting, I went and looked at employment agreements. We, 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 we looked at employment agreements between superintendents and other school districts, and, and I looked at the eight that I could find quickly online. And there were, you know, a few that had nothing in the agreement about residency. Montgomery County said shall maintain residency. Howard County said required to be a resident. Hartford said maintain. Frederick had nothing in the agreement. Charles, Charles had shall live in Charles. And Cecil County had, I thought this was interesting. There says, "Pursuant to Cecil County Public Schools' policy and specific to the residency requirement for specific certificated administrative and supervisory positions, the board and superintendent, by mutual consent, agree to relieve superintendent of any residency requirement that would cause him to establish live-in and maintain residency in Cecil County." So it, it seems like a way to, if they have a policy that says you have to live here, that you can then have this, without having to alter the policy, you can have a special stipulation for somebody who, I see Adam is kind of just thinking, okay? So we don't maybe necessarily have to change the policy, but if there is a candidate where it seems appropriate to make this sort of an adjustment, we, we could consider that.
I like leaving it sufficiently vague the way it is. I mean, I, I said last week that I think common sense would, would dictate, depending on who the person is, you know, if they're real, like Dr. Couch moved from New Mexico, you know? But if there's somebody that's just living over the Chester River Bridge, I don't think they should be made to uproot and come over into Kent County. And you look at, look at the administrators in Kent County. We've got several that either live in Cecil, Middletown, or Queen Anne's. We don't require it of other people. Look at Kent County. Kent County's warden lives in Carrolline County. Kent County's Director of Public Works lives in Wilmington, Delaware. How many police officers do not live either in Chestertown or the Sheriff's Office? Chestertown does not require its town manager or its police chief to live in there. And while we will just, I, I don't want to shortchange this any way of getting the best applicant. And while we will only be hiring the superintendent, that candidate will probably take into consideration, what does this mean for me? What does it mean for my spouse? Washington College and the hospital are perfect examples of why they can't, why we can't get any doctors. Because they don't just want to be hired, they want their spouse to have a job too. So, but anyhow, like I said, I would think common sense would dictate if you are a superintendent of a school district, to really be able to do your job most effectively, you're going to be as close to your job as possible. And if, let's say, we say Kent County's the resident, okay? You can get to Rock Hall, which is where the central office is, quicker from Kingstown than you can from Galena, and Galena's in Kent County and Kingstown isn't, so...
Something else that I, and I mentioned before, something else that was in some of these agreements, especially the ones that required residency, was that the boards offered moving expenses, and in one case, they offered up to $50,000 in moving expenses. So, you know, something to consider.
I disagree with all this. I firmly believe, and maybe we can use it to one, or zip codes where they can live, but I think someone that's coming to our school system needs to be invested in our school system. This is our county, our school system, we're the largest employer. I just feel that they, they should be living here, and I would think that anyone that comes here would agree with that also. I just, I just think it's very important that they live in Kent County, in my opinion. I don't want them living up in Cecil County, or, I understand what you're saying about their spouse's job and all that, I get that. But they live in Kingstown, well, that's 21620, that's the zip code for this area. I could accept that. But I really think that it should be Kent County, this is our school system, we run this, we have a, we have a great school system, and a lot of these people want someone that lives here. Yeah, I live in Kent County. You know, I'm here, I want, I want to be part of your group. I want to be part of everything that makes up this great school system that we have. And I feel personally that they should be in Kent County, in my opinion.
I can ask a question. I know you feel that they should be in Kent County, and maybe some others do too, but what I wanted to know...
Aretha, could you pull your mic down? Thank you.
I was saying, I know that you feel that they should be in Kent County, and other people may too. And it's not that I am against them being in Kent County, but I would like to ask a question and have time to reply to that. And that is, what is the, why is that so important? Like, is if they cannot support the school, or they can't support Kent County if they don't live in Kent County? They could be, they may be just as supportive of Kent County as someone who does live here. I mean, what makes the difference? I mean, I'm just trying to say, what makes it so now that I don't live here, I wouldn't support the county, you know? Why do we feel they were supported so much more because they live here?
I just feel it's important, in my own opinion. I think it's, it's important that the person who runs the school system lives in Kent County. We have one of the finest counties in the whole, the whole state of Maryland, as far as I'm concerned, and I would like the person to live in this county. That's my opinion, you can, everyone can share a difference, that's the way I believe.
I know, I understand, and that's your opinion, but I just wanted to know if it was something special, something that you could tell me that I don't know, that would, you know, be a catch-all, like, you know, if there's a reason why they wouldn't support it because they live outside of the county. I was just trying to figure that out, you know? And I, I just don't want stipulations that, like I said, would be a deal breaker for some people, and they're not that far. Because even Middletown is not that far.
I just don't, I don't want to limit our applicants by being too strict, because I think if you're relocating from, let's say, New Mexico, then, of course, we would encourage them to, to buy in Kent County. But if they, if they and their spouse have an established career in Queen Anne's County or Cecil County, we have to consider that as well. We can't, somebody who is our number one candidate, who lives in an adjacent county, shouldn't, shouldn't be disqualified from the position because their spouse has a career in that county, and it would be a hardship for their family to move 10 miles into our county. But I just, I, I, I think there are ways that we can accommodate that, but I just want, want us to not be so strict. I like the idea of shall live in Kent County. And I think that we can always make accommodations if we have a candidate who we really want, who has an established, you know, home in an adjacent county.
This, this might be a moot subject anyhow, they might come in and say they're going to live here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it may not...
But we have to, but we have to establish this because it's in.
I, I understand. I just don't, you know, if you come in here and say, "Well, where do you live?" "Well, I live in Middletown, but I run this, the school system in Kent County." Or, "I live in Easton." You want to live in Kent County, you want to be invested in where we are, what we are as a school system.
I don't, I have to agree with Ms., with Ms. Dorsey. I don't think residency equates to investment, you know? Where you live does not absolutely determine how invested, how invested you are or you aren't in the way how you do your job.
I, I would just say that there are administrators, and there are teachers, and there are staff, and other folks that live in Kent County and work in blue ribbon schools and QA, they work in, in positions in Talbot, they're very dedicated, very successful. And I also know that it goes the other way, where we have a lot of folks in our system that, you know, have proven to be successful in their craft, in, in educating, in administrating, in, in all of that. So I, I hear what everyone's saying. You know, I, I would be very concerned that, you know, again, I'll just reiterate, my point of view, is that I would be extremely concerned that if we were to list this as a requirement, that we will have folks pass right by. As a personal aside, I have a family member that's looking for a home, and there's nothing to buy. And so inventory is what it is, it could change in two months, it could change in eight months. But, you know, for me, I'm just not of the mindset, you know, I mean, if they're able to find a house in nine months, you know, and we have require, I mean, we would have to allow someone to find a home, and then what do they do? You know, so I, I, I just, I don't know. I, I, I'm of the mindset to allow folks to just go ahead and, you know, let's, let's get the candidates. I mean, certainly, it would be questionable if we had someone who'd lived in, you know, Chester County, Pennsylvania, well, maybe not Chester County, maybe, you know, the Lehigh Valley in Pennsylvania, and they're coming here to work. That's probably a bit of a haul. That's a good three-hour drive, three and a half hour drive. So I get it, but I, I just think that, you know, we could keep ourselves open if we had folks that, and had this requirement, even, and Adam, I'll come back to you on this policy, even if the policy stood, but it was agreed upon contractually, you know, what does that, what does that do legally?
Since we have such a specific policy, my preference would be to change the policy, take that off the table, that way we're not, you know, saying, "Oh, we'll make an exception for you, but not for someone else." You know what I mean? So, you know, that's...
Wait a minute, is this the existing policy? Or is this one?
This is the existing...
This is the existing?
Right, so, so the existing policy states...
I thought it was something Dan just worked up.
And that's kind of...
I thought you worked it up. I know, I'm reading it, but I thought it was something Dan made up last week. We're talking about it today, okay?
And that's kind of the surprise, is that, you know, it's this decades-old policy that's buried in there, that at some point, someone thought, you know, this is appropriate, and the board adopted it pursuant to its policymaking authority, and, and it hasn't been looked at till now, when it's an issue, you know, a concern. So my, my recommendation would be to, to change the policy. If you decide to change the requirement in the, in the application and the characteristics would be to change the underlying policy to be, just to be consistent with our practice and our policy, rather than make exceptions, which could be arbitrary or, or worse.
So could we take out the first sentence as one criteria and not specify anything about residency, and just say, "Conditions of employment will be detailed in the employment contract."
So that's why this policy's being presented now, is, is for potential revision. If, if you decide to revise it, the board, although we're typically used to doing a two, two-meeting cycle revision process, where you do, we actually have a board policy on how you do revisions. And the, in, in sum, it states, you, the normal process or the normal sequence is, over the course of two board meetings, where you, number one, announce the policy and discuss it, that way, you know, you can discuss your, or deliberate on it. And then a second meeting the following month, usually, to take final action on it. However, there is an exception within your policy revision adoption policy, which allows for, and I'll, I'll state what it is, it's Policy BGB. It states, "However, on matters of unusual urgency, the board may waive the, the process described above, the normal sequence, and take immediate action to adopt new or revise existing policies on matters of unusual urgency." So this arguably could be deemed an unusual urgency, given the tight timeline associated with superintendent search process, the fact that this is just kind of all coming up now, and, you know, you could take action if you decide to do so on this policy, depending on where you all stand. So it's up to you all.
So how many superintendents have we had since 1999? Has this ever come up, does anyone recall? I mean, we've had Dr. Couch, did she have any issue when she came here about living in Kent County?
She was moving from New Mexico.
I understand that, she's moved from New Mexico, but what, who else did we have before that?
Well, I can tell you, Dr. Bonnie Ward.
And where did she live?
She maintained a residence here, but she never really left Frederick County.
But she had a residence here, okay.
Yeah, I mean, she could, I mean...
Get a post office.
Yeah, two superintendents ago in Queen Anne's. That superintendent lived in Dorchester County, but rented an apartment in Centerville.
I'm just sticking with my thoughts, that's fine. I can see, I don't have a lot of agreement here, but I want her to stay in Kent County. I think it's really important. And I think if it needed to be changed, and we had someone that was important, then we could do your emergency switch on this. This hasn't been done since...
But we have to do it for the application.
We have to do it now, but we got to do it before the application goes out.
Well, I disagree, I want her to stay here, but...
Well, the other choice we could have is offer $100,000 towards the cost of a house.
Well, that sounds like a really good idea.
The size that they would need to stay in, and considering what they're used to, considering their salary, and we don't have that.
So Adam, your, your state, I mean, this really feels like it's unusual urgent circumstance.
If, if we are going to change the policy.
If we are going to change the policy, being that we are going to print Friday, March 8th, on the application.
Yes, it, I think the, the timeline associated with superintendent search process...
It's tight.
Is tight, and, and everything has to happen in a sequence. And in order for future events to occur, you have to make a decision on this, and so it seems like an unusual urgency to me. And if you all deem it to be an unusual urgency, to change the policy, or you can also decide not to change the policy.
How is it unusual? This is the policy right now, this is the policy that we have.
It's the unusual urgency of changing the policy.
It does, it does make a difference, it's not unusual urgency, this is the policy. If they come in here, they can read it.
But part of our job is to address the policies and address whether or not the policy...
The unusual urgency is associated with the policy related to revising policies. So normally, we do a, a two-meeting cycle for revising policies, this would be to allow you to do an exception to that.
So Adam, the, the two-meeting cycle, is it codified as to the distance between the meetings?
Yeah, it says for, four weeks, it'd be, you know, the, you know, normally have...
So we couldn't even do it on Monday?
No.
Right. Right.
So, I'll.
Typically, we have a mon, you know, monthly meetings.
I will make the suggestion again about removing the line that discusses residency, and changing that last paragraph essentially to just be the, the last sentence of "Conditions of employment will be detailed in the employment contract executed between the two parties." And I think that covers a range of things.
I'll make a suggestion, as Mrs. McGee said the last time. If they want to live in Kingstown, that's fine. That's 21620. That's the zip code of Kent County. I don't know how far that zip code goes, but that'll extend it a little bit. If they want, if you suggested that they wanted to live in Kingstown.
No, but that's unfair to somebody that might be living just over the border in Cecil County in Warwick and have a different zip code.
Whatever, it's 21, it's the zip code that we have, that's all. I just.
That's only Chestertown's zip code. That's not Kent County's zip code, Frank.
But you were saying.
No, I'm just using that as an example, that I thought it would be unreasonable to expect somebody to uproot their life just to move a mile or two to get over into Kent County, across the Chester River Bridge. If you're making a motion.
I wasn't. I was waiting to see if anybody else wanted to make a wording suggestion.
I, I support changing the policy to take out the residency dictate that you have to live in Kent County. I'm just, I'm not making a motion, but I'm saying you have, if you made a motion, I would second it.
Yeah, I want to say one thing. When I came on this board, okay, I took my children out of private school to put them in the public school system for four years. What are you throwing your arms up for, Mrs.? You're just throwing your arms up in the air. I'm talking, okay?
Excuse me?
Excuse me.
I didn't throw my arms.
I took my children and put them in this school system, and I feel invested in this school system. I made the effort to put my kids here. A lot of people send their kids to homeschooling, they don't do anything. I'm invested in this school. I want to see us succeed like everyone else does. And this is how I feel about this policy, so.
What would the board like to do?
I would like to make sure that it, make a motion that it's changed. And mainly, if the person wants to live here, that's fine. I just don't feel like, you know, it should be a, a deal breaker. So, I don't know how you have to put it, but I feel like that's a lot on a person.
I disagree with your motion. I disagree with it totally.
You'll have.
Not abruptly, we already know you disagree.
Adam, we have, so just as a point of clarification, Ms. Sullivan put the motion in.
Well, I think Ms. Dorsey put a motion in.
No, I said I agree with, oh, I thought she.
No, you said I'll make the motion.
No, you said I make the motion. I can make the motion.
Well, we've got a motion that, there was comments made about the motion, and Ms. McGee seconded the motion.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Well, what is the mo, what specifically is your motion?
So, I will make a motion that we use the unusual urgency exception to alter the recruitment and appointment of the superintendent policy, to remove the line about residency, and change the last paragraph to read, "Conditions of employment will be detailed in the employment contract executed between the two parties."
I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan. We have a second by Ms. McGee. Additional comments or questions?
Yes. I totally disagree with the whole, what you're voting on. I disagree with it. I'm invested in this school system. I want a superintendent that is from Kent County that can say, "I reside in this Kent, in Kent County. I support our schools, and I live here." That's all I'm saying.
And, and actually, just as a point of clarification, you know, I also have two kids that I put through the school system and brought in from private school, kindergarten and pre-K. So, I have invested myself in this county. So, I don't want it to be thought of as not investing in time and energy and all of the above. So, I just want to make that point of clarification. The other piece is, is that when we take a look at this, you know, this, as Mr. Rhodes, as you mentioned earlier, it may not be an issue.
You may not.
I mean, this may, this may just be, all that we're looking to do is trying to open the net a little wider, so that right out of the gate, we eliminate potential candidates to be able to come to Kent County. And why? Because we, we value what's here, and we want the best candidate to come here. And if we don't, if we don't do that, and we limit ourselves and close the scope down, we may miss out on something that our kids and that our families and this board and our staff and teachers and all of the above need. And so, you know, I, I understand completely where you're coming from, you know, and, and, you know, I think that everyone in this system deserves the opportunity to get the best candidate. And I personally don't think that living 20 minutes outside of Kent County or 30 minutes outside of Kent County is going to change that. That's just my opinion. So, that being said, based on the policy, what is it, B?
CBB.
CBB.
The other policy of unusual circumstances?
That's BGB.
Okay, based on policy BGB and the unusual circumstances surrounding the timing of getting the application published and submitted on Friday, March 8th, we have a motion by Ms. Sullivan. We have a second by Ms. McGee. Are there any other further comments or questions?
One other. I totally disagree with what everyone's thinking here. I'm just going to make it clear one more time, and I agree, everyone wants the person to be able to live wherever. I still think they should be invested in Kent County. We have a great county. Not saying all the other ones aren't great, but we need someone right here, so.
Okay.
Could I say one more thing?
Please.
I, I myself, if, if the person lives in Kent County, that's fine. If they do not, that's fine, as long as they're a good candidate. And that's really basically, I think, what we're saying, is we want what's best for Kent County. Because whether we live here or we don't, does not, if you live here, does not mean that you're more qualified than a person that is outside of the county. And right now, we really need to, we have a lot we have to work with, a lot that has to be done. You know, when we move forward, we have a lot ahead of us, and we need a good candidate. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second, we've had comments. One last call. Okay. Hearing no additional comments, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Any further comments? Okay. The motion has it. The motion is passed. Policy is changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Gale, nothing there? Okay.
So, just as a, moving forward, that needs to be changed on the application.
Correct.
Yeah.
Adam, did you have a question?
So, just going back to your, the criteria, let me just make sure I'm looking at the right document. The criteria has a bullet that says, "Willing to relocate to Kent County if not a current resident." So then, we, that was part of this as well, is that?
Yes, we just strike.
Based on, based on the action, we strike it.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is our notification of our next meeting. The next regularly scheduled monthly meeting will be held on Monday, March 11th, 2024, a week from tonight, beginning at 5:30 PM with the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 PM. This meeting will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, this room, located at 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland, 21661. The last item on the agenda is to adjourn. The administration is recommending approval to adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Sullivan. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the motion.